I'm calling to order the Planning Commission meeting for June 30, 2021. Let's start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is our roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have Commissioners Bullion, Campbell, Tiata, Jurgensen, Millis, Pearson, and Stilarsky present. Everyone is here.
Next up is the approval of the minutes from our Zoom virtual meeting on May 6, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Next up would be Councilmember Olson, if you have any updates, or are you?
No updates, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
Next up on our agenda will be the conditional use permit for a 240-square-foot accessory building at 1986 Helena Road North.
Good evening, Chair Millis and Commissioners. My name is Mary Caffafallo. I'm Associate Planner here in the city. And tonight I'd like to talk about Yi Wang and who wants to build an accessory building on his property at 1986 Helena. It would be 20 by 12 feet, 240 square feet, and located here on the southern edge of his property. As you can see, this is one of the properties by 694, so it goes back quite a ways, but the, there's an easement here, so this land is not capable of being built on. So this is five feet off of the easement line here. Mr. Wang's property is zoned PUD, but the underlying zoning is R4. And single-family homes in R4 are permitted one access for building up to 120 square feet. Accessory buildings exceeding those size requirements are allowed with a conditional use permit, which Mr. Wang has applied for. His application meets all of the general and specific criteria for a conditional use permit for an oversized accessory building. He's spoken with the majority of his neighbors within 100 feet, and none of them had any objections to the proposed structure. And such, the staff recommends the approval of the conditional use permit. And Mr. Wang is here, here, if you have any questions.
Do any of the Commissioners have any questions before? I will go ahead and open up then our hearing, public hearing. The role of the Planning Commission is to hold the public hearing to solicit feedback from the public and make a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council makes the final decision on all land use applications. I ask that everybody who comes up to speak does keep things respectful, and you can address any questions you have towards me. If there's anybody who would like to speak in this matter, you may come up to the podium. I believe, Mary, you though have a comment first.
Yes, I do. I received by email a comment from Doug and Bonnie Riek Peterson, R-I-E-C-K-P-E-T-E-R-S-O-N, at 2046 Helena Road. And it reads, "We received notice regarding the hearing on June 1st, or June 3rd for the proposed building at the above referenced address. We are opposed to the building of this structure." And that's the extent of their remarks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about the structure?
Well, can we, we can ask a question?
Yes, you may. Yes.
Is this the next-door neighbor that commented?
No, this is...
Looks like it's four houses.
Four houses down. It's not within the 100-foot radius. It's within the 500-foot radius for which we send out a physical mail notification.
Okay.
So he would, Mr. Wang would not have contacted them or would not have had to.
They didn't give a reason why?
They didn't.
Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this. I am looking for a motion for a conditional use permit for a 240-square-foot accessory building at 1986 Helena Road North.
So moved.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next up, we have a conditional use permit for a 240-square-foot accessory building at 7169 Upper 17th Street North.
It's, it's that time of year. In this case, Tim Holter would like to build 12 by 20-foot square, 240-square-foot accessory building in the southeast corner of his property at 7169 Upper 17th Street North. He intends to use the structure for storage and also some hobby woodworking. He intends to do most of the woodworking with traditional hand tools, so he's not anticipating a significant noise or sawdust issue. And again, his, his property is in the R4 mid-density residential zoning district. Permitted one accessory building up to 120 square feet, and buildings exceeding the size requirements may be allowed, much as Mr. Wang's was. Mr. Holter's application meets all of the general and specific criteria for the permit. He's spoken with the majority of neighbors. No one has any objections, and as such, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit.
And again, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who would just to speak on this one?
Oh, Mr. Holter is actually here, if anyone has any questions for him.
I will go ahead and close the public hearing then. I am looking, do, do any of you guys have a question?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
In the staff report, it said that there wouldn't be any tree impact.
Any, I'm sorry?
Tree impact.
Tree impact.
But it looks on the air photo like there's a lot of trees back there.
Mr. Holter would like to address that?
What were the examples, what was the question?
If there's going to be any tree removal or tree impact.
Um, I'm thinking about it because it seems to be getting out of hand, but there's one tree, and it's in the southwest corner of the property. And it's one of those silver-type birches that seem to grow on four legs upwards and... But it, it only appears to be big in the photo because you're seeing the top foliage, probably on a windy day. But it's one tree. The other people have trees that fall over on my property a little bit. But none of those trees would impact where I'm locating the shed, which is the southeast corner.
I was just curious. And then I had a question for staff. Do we issue building permits for these structures?
Yeah, it's, it's over 200 square feet, so yes.
And the only reason I ask is it looks like the neighbors is like over the property line for this.
Where?
The one to the bottom of the page there. And I don't care. It's just I'm curious if they, so they already issued permits and the property lines are verified?
That's the procedure. With, with respect to the two structures that are already there, I can't, I can't say.
I don't want to cause any problems. I don't care.
Well, I just, I know that, that Mr. Holter has, has done everything he's, he needs to do for the conditional use permit, including putting his, his structure five feet off of his property line.
Good.
What's on the other side of it is not.
I think a lot of people don't request a permit, and they just do it, nobody says anything. Looks like they're right up on, on the line, both of them.
Yes, that, yes.
But you, sir, have done well.
Pardon?
You, sir, have done well.
Any further questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I am looking, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion, and I'm looking for a motion for a conditional use permit for a 240-square-foot accessory building at 7169 Upper 17th Street North.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next up on our agenda is a site plan review for building additions and parking circulation changes at Tartan High School, 828 Greenway Avenue North. And Emily?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Emily Shively. I'm the Opale City Planner. And this next item is a request for site plan review for building additions and site circulation changes at Tartan High School. And as the Chair mentioned, it's at 828 Greenway Avenue. So this location map shows 10th Street along the north, Greenway along the east, and then 7th Street is down there. I'm going to do a little side-by-side comparison of the existing and proposed. That fits on the screen. So these existing three-story round towers on the east side of the building will be demolished, and then a new 185,700-square-foot building addition will be constructed to the north. So this will be removed, and the new building addition will be on the north side of the building. That addition will include new three-story classroom wing, two two-court gymnasiums, science department expansion, a media center, and a new main office adjacent to the administration offices to add a secure entry to the building. And they'll also be renovating portions of the existing building to do upgrades to meet their programming needs, and then also make accessibility upgrades to the building. For site circulation changes, the biggest thing is there's going to be a separation between bus traffic and vehicle traffic. And this is something that the school district has done on a number of their sites, so we've seen that at Castle and at Eagle Point recently. So here, main traffic will come from Greenway again, as it is now, but the bus circulation will enter into its own kind of parking area to the north of the vehicle parking area. And then vehicles will enter through the south entrance, do a one-way loop around, and then back out for parent drop-off and just kind of ease of separating that kind of traffic. There are a lot of sidewalks and plazas that provide a lot of different opportunities for folks to get dropped off and then cars to continue on their way. And then, to show you what the building will look like, the exterior materials, this is the palette of materials that are being proposed, and it consists of brick, windowglass, these metal panels, different colors, and then a precast concrete. This next image is a little bit tricky to see, but this just shows the different facades of the building, from the east, as looking at it from Greenway, from the north, from the fields and 10th Street, the west, and then the south elevations. But the architects have done beautiful renderings of what they anticipate this new building to look like, so this is a little bit easier to kind of visualize what the new building will look like. So this is the main entrance. So there will be a new sign welcoming you to the school. Actually, I will point to the site plan to sort of show where these different views are coming in. So that is at this main entrance. And then this entrance is just a little bit further to the south. And here, we're looking at the new gymnasium area in the northeast part of the building. And this, we're starting to move around to the north facade, so we're starting to kind of go around the building this way. Kind of started here, and those views are coming around. So here's another image from the north, where you can see kind of the offsets of the building for more interest and the different material changes. So again, this is moving a little bit further west, towards that northwest corner of the building, and then around to the west side. So this is where that trash handling and deliveries occur. And then they've also provided, where's the bird's eye view? So again, this is looking towards the southwest, so if we're kind of hovering above 10th and Greenway, this was kind of, would be the view. So again, those round classroom towers would be removed from the east side of the building, and then this is the, the main new part of the structure. The project is scheduled to start in early spring 2022, and the project will proceed in phases over about 36 to 40 months, with full occupancy of the building planned for August 2025. The plans have been reviewed and found to be compliant with the ordinance requirements, so staff is recommending approval of the site plan request. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And then representatives on behalf of the school district and their architectural team are here, if you have any questions as well.
Thank you for the presentation. Just a question I have, I may be looking in the wrong area, but it appears to me that with this improvement, we propose more parking than previously, or about the same? And if it is more, was that called for by the code, or?
So it's basically the same. There are a few fewer parking spaces than exist right now. So because this portion of the building is being removed, there's more space for the parking lot and circulation on the east side of the building. There is parking right now along the north side of the building, and that's probably where about 20 spaces are, you know, not going to be replaced. And then the parking lot on the west side of the building will be restripped, so right now the drive aisles can go north-south, and then they'll be east-west. But capacity of the school is not anticipated to change either, so the parking is sufficient for what they have.
So as a follow-up, with this project, is there a requirement to provide any more green space or water retention, or no?
So this project does require a Ramsey Washington Metro Water to District permit for the impervious surface, and they have gone through the permitting process, and that permit will be ready when they're ready to start construction. So they will be making stormwater improvements on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Historically, have they been close to capacity limits on parking for students and everything? I mean, are they right there, or is there room to, because you're taking away 20 spots and the students, where are they going to park? And along that road in the back opposite houses, any, any concerns about that?
I am going to ask someone from the district if they want to talk a little bit more about how parking is handled at Tartan. You have to pay to have a parking spot at the school. So there's a certain number of passes that are available. And then some students arrive via bus, and some students also walk to Tartan. Quite a few students actually walk to the high school. So I think some years ago, there were issues with spillover parking into the neighborhoods, and so the city instituted some parking restrictions in the neighborhood where you can't basically park on those streets during the school day to address that concern.
Okay, so that'll continue, then I could be parking along the street opposite the houses on 11th? Okay. And how about the, the size of the roadway? It's Greenway. You know, the buses coming out when they exit, they're probably going to head towards 10th Street, make a left. I'm assuming most parents might come in 10th Street because that's the major road, so they're going to be, any concerns about traffic at the key times of, but I, I know you have a separate area now for the buses, which is good. Any, any concerns with that?
Perhaps my question will be appropriate at this time as well. I'd like to know what the pattern was for buses and dropping off children existing now, and what the new plan is. Obviously, the buses are going to be up there, but I, I don't know what the change in the, in the traffic pattern is going to be.
Emily, maybe you could, we could reference the previous site plan. So I think one of the benefits about the bus drivers is that the district has the ability to direct them how they'd like them to leave the site, and so if there is an issue, they could ask them to turn right or turn left to avoid parent traffic. But I think there's an anticipation that it's going to be a significant improvement because right now, they're really tangling a lot, and so giving each of them their own space. And the nice thing about buses is that they arrive, you know, kind of, the end of the day is usually the problem. And then they can, they leave all at the same time, right? So students come and they, they leave, and so it's a very brief interruption of parent traffic, right? It's, the buses are rolling out, and you can kind of control traffic in that regard. I don't know if you have other opinions.
Definitely, you know, that'll help things, you know, keep parents and busing, you know, separate. Also, as far as the bus loop that we're putting in will be an additional, you know, parking area for night events or student overflow, student events there, which we don't, don't have right now. So, so it's actually, we'll add more parking spots in the event we have, you know, events at the school. So during the day, we wouldn't let anybody park in there probably. Well, maybe we would between, you know, as long as buses aren't in there, but they will probably be using that space for other things, you know, during the day. PE class or, you know, things like that, so.
And maybe we can speak to existing traffic patterns on the site map here. So I think the right, the right-hand side is the existing, so the buses don't have their own dedicated space. So on the whole, they drop off on the, on the south of the building, kind of end-to-end, so that they were in very much in a tangling fashion with the cars that are on site. And the nice thing about the new shape is that they will be able to angle park with the doors along the sidewalk, and it, then no buses actually have to back up as well. So right now, they form a very big, long chain along that southern part of the site. So it's a much more cost, or I'd say, space-efficient way to drop off buses.
Actually, last year, we, we redid the how buses entered, et cetera, made it one-way, and that tended to help alleviate some of the tangles, but that worked quite well, so.
Did they then exit onto 7th Street?
Was it 7th?
The south, this?
No, they exited on, is it Greenway that goes?
Yeah, they exited on Greenway.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Just last year, though.
Yeah, that was just last year. So they could go either way. So the, so the, right out Tartan's front, buses could go either way, but people couldn't come in off of Greenway.
So a one-way loop?
It was a one-way from, from the, before you go out to the back of the building to Greenway.
Counterclockwise.
Yeah. So, so people could still go out on 7th Street and come in off of 7th Street to park in the arena, you know, kind of area, so.
So the number of buses and cars coming in and off of Greenway will be roughly the same?
Yeah.
You weren't using the 7th Street exit?
Yeah. Yep. I would assume, so, yep.
So I have a question about the, again, I'm parking here. I'm concerned that it seems we've gone from what was effectively two exits to that parking lot, and we've narrowed it down to one exit on the east side of the lot, or plan, I guess as I look at this, it's, what is it, south side of the lot? You know, effectively, cars could come out and they could loop around the one-way traffic, but I don't know that in practice, most of them will do that. So has there been thought given to that? Because to your point, if, if the afternoon is the busiest time and we have 230 stalls filled, and all of that traffic is now throttled at one choke point, that could become an issue.
I think it was effectively operating that with the one-way traffic already, and certainly, feel free to jump in if you disagree, Emily, but I think a lot of site safety best practice is not having too many curb cuts in a row because that can lead to accidents out on the busy street. And so there were several in, in succession there along the road, and so this actually minimizes one of those curb cuts, which helps reduce accidents out on a street that has higher speed. So it's bringing the traffic circulation on our property, our district property.
And I'm not specifically talking to green, to the curb, curb cuts on Greenway.
Oh, okay.
But the internal site. So you have, you know, on the, I don't know, Emily, if you can show it, kind of.
I know it either.
Yep, so folks would be coming into the parking lot, and there's a number of different drive aisles they could go into. And then what Commissioner Campbell is saying is that there's one, basically, exit out to the south, and at this point, they could go left or right.
Right. And where prior you had an exit to the north and an exit to the south. No, no, that's okay. And so, you know, alternatively, they can go to the south still, or they have to loop all the way around to get out, and I, I just don't know. I'm concerned that there's going to be a lot of traffic at that south entrance and, and just get clogged.
Sure. I don't know, Greg, if you have any opinions about that?
They could also go west, come out and go west, not to Greenway. You know, they can go to west and come out further down.
It's, it's not a matter of once they, once they get to that point, going left or right, you've got one point to go to, or you're having to loop all the way around where you've got all of these parents picking up kids.
I'm not sure. I've been in that parking lot. If you come in, they used to have the two entrances, one in the north, one in the south.
Right.
And if you come in at the north one, and you go down, you can't actually get back out that way. And if you come in at the north one, and you go down, you can't actually get back out that way.
So, but right now, you can exit and fill those two points.
Yeah, you really couldn't. This one, yes, in theory you could, but in practice you couldn't.
I can see, I understand the comment.
Yep. You'd come in here, you'd end up going out down here, or you'd have to wind around to come back in. So it's, people wouldn't normally drive that way just because of the way the parking lot was laid out.
Sure.
I think one of the other, Greg, similar to you, just popped up to, you know, maybe another thing to think about is actually the intent for that east lot is to be primarily staff, actually. And so at the end of the day, you know, the student exodus is the main concern, and they're actually going to be on the west side or the back.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah. I apologize for.
No, no, that's, that's why we do this.
Yeah.
One other question about the bus area. How, how do they maneuver through there? Is the intent that they, they come in, they loop down around, and then start at kind of that far northeast or, I guess, very southeast?
Yeah.
All in kind of backfill?
Yeah, so they, they can come in, so they, you know, obviously turn in off the road, and then the angle parking, they can all park along there. And that allows the door of the bus to be right along the sidewalk, so students can step right out. And then the curve at the front or at the west side of it is such that actually the first bus or the last bus there can actually just make a turning maneuver without having to back up. And then more buses can be on the south side. And so what, you know, at the end of the day, when they're all leaving, the very, I'm going to call it southeastmost bus would be the first to leave.
First one to go, yep.
Right, and then they all go. In the morning, they kind of come as they, right, as they do their routes. But in the afternoon, they wait until everybody's ready to go, and then the first one goes.
Yep.
Everything's kind of hard to see.
Yeah.
I'll be honest, I kept doing this on the site plan, trying to, like you do on your phone.
I know what you mean.
No other questions from me.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Then I'm looking for a motion for the site plan review for Tartan High School renovations at 828 Greenway Avenue North.
No move?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Finally, we have a city code amendment to allow temporary outdoor patios for restaurants.
Okay. So, hello again. This is an amendment, an ordinance amendment to allow temporary patios in the city of Oakdale. And the city council has requested that the planning commission take a look at this issue and give feedback for them to advise them as they make their decision on the ordinance amendment. The reason the city is considering this is we want to support restaurants in Oakdale. Currently, there are 41 restaurant businesses in the city. 22 of them have space for patios in, in the way their lots are constructed. But the other 19 are not allowed to, under the city code. They would, they would have to set up on a sidewalk or use parking spaces, and that's not allowed at this time. So staff is proposing an ordinance that would allow all of Oakdale's restaurants to be able to have an outdoor patio in the warm weather season. This will be similar to the Garden Center license, which also regulates temporary structures that have the potential to impact public safety. And why, why are we recommending a license for this? Well, we need to regulate the location, not the location of the restaurants, but the location of the patios on the sites, the duration over the course of a year, and the activity that's going on there, basically the noise impact, potential nuisance issues. And I want to touch on these three points briefly and then turn it over to the commission for a discussion. But location means preserving the public safety for pedestrians and for vehicular circulation and traffic. With respect to duration, the Garden Centers, as you know, you're like the one at Hy-Vee or across the street at Cub, they're temporary installations. And the proposed ordinance sets the season is from March 1st through November 30th. Although restaurants, you don't have to be, you don't have to be open for that whole time. You don't have to have Thanksgiving on the patio. Restaurants could apply at any time and for any duration within that window. And finally, we explicitly call out the noise ordinance because even though every business is subject to it, we want to make sure that people applying for this license have looked at it and made a plan to comply with it. And the licensure process, it also enables the city to review any land use or public safety issues that would arise on a yearly basis and up to and including not renewing or not issuing a license the following year if the problems are insurmountable. We don't anticipate that, but we like to leave that option open. The proposed ordinance would provide all of the city's restaurants the opportunity to have a patio, which, whereas only about half of them are at this point. And that's really all I have for you. You've got the memo, which lays out what the ordinance does in greater detail and the draft of the proposed ordinance. Happy to answer any questions, but at this point, yeah, please, please discuss. No comment to make. I certainly think that, so codes evolve, okay? So as we move along through time, things happen, and we can change the code to adapt. And we all know with this pandemic and everything else, a lot of restaurants are hurting. And Minnesota weather is, the summer is short. So everything we can do to support these businesses, as long as we are looking, have an eye out for safety, for public safety, as long as we can do it in a way that equitable, of course, and is safe for everybody, I think it perfectly makes sense. So that's my comment, the comment that I have.
I have a question, are they charging for the license?
The fee will be $400, which is the same as the Garden Center license fee. I'm sorry?
City council can set the fee.
Oh, sorry. The city council can set the fee. The proposal is $400.
As a small business owner, I would suggest and recommend the city council take a look at that and lower the fee, if not eliminate it. Because I mean, you know, $400 is $400, just another license, right?
I would concur, yes.
You know, and I think that it's a good idea, I agree with Yaya. But let's make it easy for them, not charge them $400, all right?
I, I.
So that's my input.
No, that's.
Or minimal, you know, I understand there's some staff time, you know, involved on your, both your part.
Right, right.
Mary and Emily. But, you know, we want to make it, they've been through a rough two years. And it is a short season, doesn't last very long. And I like the fact that you've got the, you're addressing the noise issue because that would be a problem, could be a problem.
Potentially, right?
You know, you can revoke it if they, you know, if they.
Yeah. And we just, we want to get out in front of things.
That would be my only input. I really think we should look at the fee and make sure it's minimal, if anything at all.
Okay, no, that, that, that makes perfect sense. I understand where you're coming from.
Well, I have a few things. First one is, you know, we allow this March 1st through November 30th so that, and there was commentary in here about, you know, allowing snow removal and things like that. However, our city parking ordinance runs November 1st through April 1st. So presumably for snow removal and things like that. So I would suggest that we align those two so that they're running concurrently if it's good enough for vehicles and things like that. I think that's, that's one thing I would suggest. How do we, what's the process for ensuring that public safety, that there's adequate room on sidewalks, that there's adequate room for vehicle maneuvering? Who determines that? What's the criteria that goes into that?
That would be staff review.
Okay.
Again, similar to the Garden Center. And it would be on a case-by-case basis as far as, because everybody's plan is going to be a little different based on their, the configuration of their site. But that's why we're bringing, you know, we want to do it this way as opposed to just a straight ordinance because we want to be able to look at those things and work with business owners. If they submit a plan, then it's like, well, maybe that might not be, you know, in the best interest of public safety. That gives us an opportunity to work with them and make something that, that makes, that makes sense from a safety standpoint.
Comment on both, both of those questions. The distinction here is that the, the parking ordinance for snow plowing is because those are city streets. These, these, the subject here is a private parking lot that's plowed by the private entity, not the city. So there's no conflict at that point. And one that I, I hesitated to bring up, but my understanding is for most licenses, the investigation and recommendation comes from the police department for safety. I don't know that I really want to pass this one off to the police department, but that would address this question on safety issues.
Well, the police department would be involved in enforcement.
Liquor licenses and things like that, hairdressers, they're all investigated by the police.
And my question was less about, like, is safety in the sense of crime and things like that more?
In terms of, I didn't want to try and push it that direction, but.
Yeah, I think I was more, you know, is there three, three, four feet for pedestrian traffic? Is there?
Right.
You're parking in or you're setting this up in parking stalls and not drive aisles and things like that?
Exactly, and that's, that's, that's what the staff review would entail. You know, once, once again, pointing to the Garden Center as an example, those are all in parking spaces, right? And that's, and that's why, that's what we look at to make sure that the driver aisles are protected and there's, that safety for pedestrians is maintained as well.
And similarly, with overall size, it's kind of up to staff to determine, yes, this is an acceptable size or this is too large?
Right, although it would be, it would be a function of how much space they have available. For example, if you've got a business that has a limited number of, a limited amount of partners, kind of up against their parking limit in the, in the, in the parking part of the code, then there might only be a handful of spaces that they could afford to devote to this because we, they wouldn't be able to go underneath their minimum parking requirement. Similarly, if, if the sidewalk was, you know, if sidewalks are as big as they are, and if there's, there'll only be so much space because you'll need to maintain pedestrian access.
I think, Emily, correct me if I'm wrong, we used to, back in the day, review every one of these in the parking lots and the Garden Centers, the temporary events. They all came through the planning commission, and we got away from that to make it an internal review to save time and effort on everyone's part. But we used to see these all the time. That's what I remember.
So I've been at Oakdale almost seven years, and so I don't think in any of that time I've brought any Garden Centers through the planning commission. So it's been at least that long that we've done internal staff review of these. And as Mary mentioned, so the fire chief will look at it to make sure that there's sufficient area for emergency vehicles to come through and maneuver through there. The building official would also look at it. So again, to that code for how much sidewalk space is needed for people to get through, and also looking at the patio seating area itself because sometimes there are some code requirements for access and maneuvering between tables and things like that. So we've got a great team here at the city who can look at things from a number of different aspects to ensure that it's safe and functional.
The permission given last year, did it require that they submit a plan?
Yes.
It did, so this is really no. So for the 22 restaurants that had outdoor seating, really, it's nothing different for them. They just probably submit the same plan or something similar.
Well, the, the restaurants that already have patios can still continue. They wouldn't need this licensure. It's for the ones that haven't, that aren't able to.
Oh, I get you.
Right, because the, the, the thought process being that the restaurants that have it are, are in compliance, presumably.
But they don't need another license?
They would not need a license for this.
Okay, that's all the more reason we shouldn't have a fee, make them, you know. But for the ones that didn't participate. Because the ones that have a choice spot with abundant parking where there weren't issues, they get a free pass, and then, you know, you got to pay $400 if you got a tight spot. So it just kind of emphasizes my earlier comment. But I also think that the newer, the restaurants that are not participating, I'm looking at these and I'm, I suspect, given COVID is starting to lighten up and restaurants, you know, the big push was last year that you could only have 50% of that.
Right.
So you wanted to be outdoors. That's gone away now. Okay, so bottom line is, I don't think the demand is going to be there. And I don't think we're going to see a very large portion of these others that are going to need that. But that's a personal opinion, but just a comment and observation.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's hard to say which ones will, will go for it. But at the same time, I think we did learn last year that pandemic or no pandemic, dining outside is cool.
Right.
And we, the city would like to enable all of our restaurants to have that opportunity.
And I would suspect the ones on top of the list, many of them will indeed do it again for that very reason.
They probably already are.
Especially if they don't need a patio or a license.
Right, right.
I just want a clarification. The ones that are on the top of the list, most of those are permanent patios, correct?
Correct.
Versus these temporary structures that we're talking about, right?
Yes, the, yes, the, the, the bottom list are the ones that would be eligible for this license. The top ones would not need it because.
They're permanently.
Right. One question, I'm sorry if I missed it, but one question I have, these, is the license renewable annually? Yes. Okay. Whether you're permanent or temporary, correct? Well, it's a temporary, it's a temporary outdoor patio license. So it would have to be renewed every year, correct?
And it would be reviewed every year too, depending on how it went. Because like, we're talking McDonald's and we're talking, you know, they don't have, or some of these don't have a huge parking lot, and you're not going to be able to use too much. It's not going to be much of a outdoor seating anyway because like you say, there's not any, there's not going to be in compliance with how many spaces they need for their people. So these people that don't have the outdoor seating right now are, they're small, will be smaller areas anyway, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's, it'll be in a case-by-case, but theoretically, yes, some of these areas could be pretty small.
Have any of these restaurants reached out yet this year asking for some sort of outdoor, temporary outdoor seating?
Yeah, the Ugly Putters Indoor Golf Club has reached out. And Bamboo Kitchen did it last year. Have we heard from them this year?
Yeah, so, yep, as Mary said, Ugly Putters is the one that kind of kicked this forward again because last year, the only one we had was Bamboo. And at Bergen Plaza, they aren't allowed to utilize the parking lot of that area because of some insurance issues and things like that. There's also a drive aisle that's between the businesses and the parking lot, so it's not very convenient, can't really have that adjacency. But there's a really wide kind of plaza in front of those buildings. And so D-Spot and Bamboo have taken advantage of that wider space. And then Beer Stoop has had their own permanent space for some time there. So at Bergen, it's a little bit different. But yeah, Ugly Putters was the one that came to us this year and said, okay, we, you know, last year, the permit expired at the end of September, and so we didn't have a means to accommodate that. So that's what initiated this.
As a follow-on comment to Bob's earlier comment, the ones that I've been to that don't have existing patios, they're probably, they can only put in like three tables. So a $400 license for three tables, that kind of, that would hurt, just as a comment.
Sure. I was second the comment. $400 every year for a mom and pop?
For three, for three tables.
Yeah.
That's probably 200% of their profit.
I just had a quick question. It's a little off-topic, but it's not. How do we deal with the food trucks?
How do we deal with the food trucks that show up in parking lots? Are they regulated, or anyone can just plop down and maybe don't?
Like what's going on at Hy-Vee right now?
Exactly.
Um, I don't know. You?
I'm not as familiar with the food truck regulations. I don't know if you've had some conversations with the council about sort of loosening some of those things. I know we do have a section in the city code that addresses mobile food vendors or mobile vendors, that sort of thing, where they can be located, the time limit. And I believe last year, the city council may have waived the license fee for food trucks. So again, that's something that's at the council discretion. Any of the fees, setting the fees, and then, you know, waiving the fees under certain circumstances, things like that. It's all at the council's discretion.
Like, that gets back to the point about the fee. We can have outside vendors come in and plop their trucks in and make money, yet our existing businesses are getting hit with this big fee. I was just curious, because, yeah, it's up at Hy-Vee, and I don't know how long they're allowed there, or what kind of process, if there is one, or anyone can just drive in and get permission and set it down for X amount of days, I don't know.
The city licensing department works with them.
It's not just Hy-Vee's permission, they do need a permit.
I believe so.
Okay.
We can look into that.
Do we have any more questions about the temporary outdoor patios? Then I am looking for a motion to the city code amendment for temporary outdoor patios.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And then Emily, do you have any updates first?
Just a quick update. So for the applications that the planning commission reviewed in May, the city council approved the plat, and the site plan for the springs at Willbrook, so they'll be getting underway soon. And then our GIS person is able to get really current aerial photos. And I just wanted to show you this, because I think it's pretty cool. This is the Willbrook site. And you can see the grading that occurred last fall. And so, and then here's the plan. So you can see, you know, here's the new Helmo Avenue that's going to come up. And this, this will be a future phase, so there'll be some refinement, but you can kind of see how that is taking shape. Fortieth Street, that will be realigned south and then connect up with Lake Jane Trail, so you can start to see that taking shape there. And then the stormwater ponds around the new park are taking shape, and the Park Road, the stormwater pond that's kind of in the center of this neighborhood, and this is all the first phase. This is the area where the townhomes will be constructed, single-family homes up along there. This is where the springs will go, so that's kind of a blank slate right now, but that'll be coming in. And then this is the pipeline easement that goes through the open space. So you can kind of see that they couldn't really touch that, because they needed to make sure that that infrastructure stayed put. Similarly, there's the pipeline that runs through here. But it's kind of neat to see the progress of that site taking shapes. And then similarly, I saw, so we were talking about Tartan. Last year, we looked at Eagle Point Elementary. So this is a very current aerial photo. Showing here is 15th Street and the existing Eagle Point School and the new school. So here's the gymnasium on this side, the classroom wings really starting to take shape over there. So I thought that was kind of neat. And then the other item that the planning commission reviewed in May was the PUD amendment for the forefront for new industrial uses there. And the city council will be reviewing that at their next meeting on Tuesday, on the 8th. We are at this point planning to have a July meeting on July 1st, so stay tuned for that. And we'll hopefully see you back here then.
I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.